This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. This meeting is being shown on Whitman Hansen Cable Access Television. It is being recorded and will be available to view in the future at WHCA.tv/watch. The meeting is being held virtually in accordance with Governor Baker's orders during COVID-19. There will be no public participation this evening. We have done a preliminary roll call prior to the start of the meeting. When we move into the meeting, the votes will be done by roll call so that they're, so the votes are clear, as will comments and discussion. So please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So someone just has to remind me who our clerk is, because I've already forgot. Is it Laura? Is Laura our clerk?
Yeah, it's Laura. Laura's the clerk. Do you want me to talk for two minutes? Me or the announcements?
You're the best. Thank you.
Well, first I gotta find him. Hang on.
It looks like we have a couple of minutes. I'll take your time.
All right.
He's short, I can tell you that.
Yeah, there's nothing but dates.
Wes, I have it right here if you'd like.
Are the one?
I can read it if you like.
Why don't you read them?
All right. Fiscal year 21, real estate and personal property bills have been mailed and now are due on August 3rd, 2020 for the first quarter and November 2nd, 2020 for the second quarter. If you have not received your bill, please call the Treasurer Collector's Office at 781-293-2422. Volunteers are needed on the following committee: Facebook Maintenance Committee, 200th Anniversary, Conservation Commission, one regular and two associate members, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Economic Development, Finance, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, North River Mission, and Zoning Board Alternate. Application for appointment and information on the committees are available on the town website at hanson-ma.gov. Upcoming meetings and events: On Tuesday, July 14th, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, July 29th, town meeting starting at 6:30 PM up at the high school this year. And Thursday, July 30th, 2020, just in case, will be a town meeting runoff, just in case we have to go over, starting at 6:30 PM up at the high school.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Before we start, we gotta make sure Laura can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, so first up, I'm gonna juggle some things around here. So I'm gonna go down to old business and first we're gonna talk about the review and the vote on the Host Community Agreement, the amendment for Impressed LLC for marijuana product manufacturing at 15 commercial way. So Kate, can you cue us up on that? I have the host agreement in front of me.
Yeah, and essentially what I did was super simple. I just amended your existing agreement, which has built in all of those protections that you're well aware of and has the community impact payment spelled out in that agreement. And all I did was go through and made amendments to allow for manufacture. So you see, it's a super simple, three-page document, which just identifies the paragraphs that say in the agreement it's limited to marijuana cultivation and expands that to include marijuana manufacturer as well. And that's it. Super easy.
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions on this host agreement?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Matt.
So I just wanna make sure that, I just wanna make sure that Impressed LLC is still gonna do a quick outreach meeting, just to make sure that people don't feel that they're in the dark and we're doing things behind closed doors. I just wanna make sure that we're super clear and transparent, that we're not doing anything, you know, behind closed doors or anything like that. And there's gonna be an opportunity to talk about it.
We're on top of that here at Impressed. We're very much aware that we need to do another community outreach meeting. We'll put the proper notifications within the Whitman Hansen Express and share that with all of you as well. And I understand it will be a virtual meeting, so we'll just make clear that it will be a virtual meeting as well.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And you're satisfied with this agreement, this three-page agreement we have in front of us?
Who? Who were you asking me?
Yes, I'm sorry, Kate. I said you're satisfied with this host agreement?
Yes, I'm satisfied because it captures, what it does is, it captures all the sales that come out of a facility, regardless if it's raw product like flour or manufactured product like an edible or an oil or something like that.
Okay. All right, so if there's no more questions, so we've gotta vote this host agreement, Kate, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the host agreement between the Town of Hanson and Impressed LLC.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Okay, any more questions? Oh, wait a minute, I think we lost Laura again. Laura, you still with us?
I'm still with you.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, your video is down. I thought we lost you. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, so the second part of this is kinda what Matt was alluding to. Review and approve the virtual community outreach meeting for Impressed LLC and the authorization of the town administrator to notify.
Yeah, so the CCC, in light of the coronavirus outbreak, issued guidance about virtual meetings because before it was contemplated, obviously, that these meetings would be done in person. And because of the pandemic, they modified this to allow for remote meetings so that the applicants can discuss what their plans are with the community. And there are very strict requirements, namely to have ADA compliance, so you need a person, an ability for a hearing impaired person to be able to listen and participate, so closed captioning, et cetera. And there needs to be an open process whereby people can inquire of Impressed as to their plans.
Okay, how many meetings would there be?
It's only one that's required.
Okay. And when do we think that that meeting would be?
Ralph, Ally.
We can put the request into the Whitman Hansen Express and pick a date for the two-week notice that we need to give. We also need to send out to our abuddies, a mailer with that notification and make sure it's at least 12 days or 14 days in advance to the virtual meeting that we'll have.
Okay, so real.
You're looking at really a month.
Okay. Okay, but it sounds like he knows everything that he has to do from the last time. Is there any questions from the board?
Two virtual stuff that we'll make sure we do properly.
I'm sorry, Ralph. Repeat that?
Other than the virtual things that we need to discuss to make it done properly, that's all.
Okay.
The closed caption and all that, just making sure we have that available to us will make sure.
Is there any questions from the board regarding the virtual community outreach meeting?
My only question is not even for Ralph and Ally necessarily, but so how does the town get, get the email or whatever with the link to get in?
Good question. We probably would have to put that on the.
Yeah, they have to file with the clerk that they're having a community outreach meeting, so I assume also Ralph and Ally will notify the town administrator, but they're required to submit with the clerk regardless.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Matt.
So, and I just wanna make sure too, because I know there's gonna be critics of this. There's gonna be also a dial-in phone number for those who are not savvy with the computer or have a smartphone to join video chat, but they can call in on their landline. Is that correct?
We can make that.
We can make that happen for sure. We will make that happen. That's a requirement for sure.
Great, thank you. Usually with Zoom, there is that dial-in number, but I just wanna make sure that we're clear and transparent right off of that.
We'll make sure for sure. Yep.
Okay, good. Any more questions?
If people, if people have questions that they want to get to you guys in advance, will you have something in the paper about how they could do that to you?
We'll put that in the Whitman Hansen Express, Laura, as early as this Tuesday. Hopefully, we can get it for next Thursday's, you know, send out of the Whitman Hansen Express.
Your phone number and email.
My phone number, email, and all the information that they can get in touch with us prior to, if they have questions that they wanna discuss before and after, of course.
All right, and then you'll send, you'll send something to cable, letting them know about it, and then hopefully send something to John Stanbrook so we could have that on our Facebook page and on our town website. And, you know, because I think the last time, and I know you guys went above and beyond, and I think you had like seven sessions maybe the last time, I don't know, at least six, which I know you were only required to have one. And so, but the complaint was, oh, we didn't know about it, you know, we didn't hear about it. So I just wanna make sure that we're kind of like go overboard, if anything, making sure everybody knows that you guys are having this.
We will for sure. You will for sure. We'll see it all.
Okay, great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, so looking for a motion for the approval of a virtual community outreach meeting for Impressed LLC and also to authorize the town administrator to notify.
So moved.
Moved by Laura.
Second by Jim.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, Ralph and Ally, thank you guys very much, very much, and we appreciate it and we'll be looking forward to that date so we can ask you guys lots of.
We thank you guys.
Thank you very much, so much.
Thank you.
We'll make you proud.
Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, moving back up to.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Moving back up to new business, the 2020 annual. Vote to place articles and make recommendations and execute warrants. John, you wanna cue this up for us, Mr. Stanbrook?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, I have the special and annual town meeting warrants that you wrote in your packet. They are ready for review and placement on the actual warrant to be posted as soon as you, as soon as you vote, probably tomorrow. At least we'll be starting to post it tomorrow. So I don't know if you wanna just go article by article on the, on the special and the annual, and you can say yes or no. I don't know how it usually works here, but we can go article by article. You can see whether or not you wanna place it. Start with that.
Article, if you wanna just read the article, I don't think we need an explanation unless, if somebody has one, they could stop and we could read the explanation. What do you guys think? That's fine?
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
To make it easier on Greg, would you like designate someone to move in second?
Yep.
Yes.
Idea.
So I don't mind moving them.
I'll second.
So it's gonna be Matt moving him. It's gonna be Jim to second.
Great.
Okay. Okay, so this is a special town meeting. So Article 1 is the unpaid bills, is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $12,9650 from free cash to pay for unpaid bills from prior fiscal years or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 1.
So moved by Matt?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 2.
Article 2 is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $6,262 from free cash to pay for a reimbursement to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for repairs made to the elevator at the Indian Head Elementary School or take any action, any other action in relation thereto.
I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 2.
So moved by Matt?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 3.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from free cash to pay for the removal and replacement of sidewalks at Indian Head Elementary School and/or Hanson Middle School or take any other action in relation thereto.
Looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 3.
So moved by Matt?
Mr. Hickey.
Jim.
Second by Jim.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 4.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,750 from free cash to pay for the purchase of a walk-behind blower or take any other action in relation thereto.
Great, I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 4.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye, and can I ask a question? Do we know what the FinCom recommendations are on these?
I do not know yet, no.
All right, but we're just moving to place right now, right?
So far, we've placed and recommended, Laura.
Okay, well, I'd like to know what the FinCom recommendations are.
I don't think they voted on their recommendations yet. I think they're meeting next Tuesday. I'd have to double check, but I think it's.
And actually, I do agree with Laura. I was going to wait until the annual because on that I certainly have questions about recommending. The special, I just assumed.
Well, you don't have to recommend if you guys aren't comfortable with it, that's fine. We just have to.
Yeah, I just. The reason I asked, Kenny, is I wanna make sure that we're doing this as collaboratively as possible and that we're thinking about, you know, the perspective that the FinCom guys are bringing because they're looking at that holistically with Todd. And so I feel comfortable moving to place on these articles, but I would really like to wait for a recommendation until I get some kind of a feedback from FinCom on this. But that's just me personally.
No, I think that's smart.
So if FinCom is.
Anything that costs money, FinCom is gonna say no.
Well, maybe not.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we are in dire straits, and I think the FinCom recommendation is going to be huge. So, I mean, as I say, I was just gonna say, I guess the special's fine. It's small potatoes. But what's coming up, I really wanna know.
Don't forget, our financial team removed, how many articles, John? Seven? Due to finances.
There are several, yeah.
Right, but that doesn't mean that they fully recommend all of them. And the reason I asked was like, I'm thinking, well, geez, I don't know, do they recommend that we do these sidewalks? I mean, we are in dire straits. I, so I just, I, you know, I don't wanna be saying something that's completely counter, you know, productive to the perspective that they're taking. So, anyway.
So John, the question remains, do, are we gonna be able to meet again after FinCom recommends these for our board to be able to recommend them before town meeting? Because we're gonna be making change tonight as far as one of our selectmen meetings.
So I think the Finance Committee is meeting on the 14th. I'll firm that up. So we have a meeting that, so obviously, we won't know what they're voting because we'll be meeting. So we could have a meeting on the 21st where you could, you could vote to recommend, and then maybe we could pull the August 4th meeting that we have scheduled because there's nothing, you know, that'll be after town meeting. We can maybe take two weeks off. So we could add a meeting on the 21st if you'd like, and we could, you could put all the recommendations on there because we'll have them from the Finance Committee, and then maybe pull the August 4th meeting so that we can, after town meeting, we won't need to meet.
No, I think that would be fine. Would they have time to print that up for town meeting so the residents could see our recommendations? Do you know if that's enough time between the 21st and town meeting? Because if it isn't, that's fine. We'll just place tonight and we can recommend on the 21st.
I think we could, we could do it.
Yeah.
I think so, yes.
Okay. All right. All right, that's fine. So the motion, so remove the place on the motion for Article 4, or do you wanna go back, Laura? What do you, I have to go back and see the other three.
Well, I'm just one gal. I don't know how other people, you know, I, but I think for consistency's sake, maybe it would be good if, you know, like, we're either all or nothing. It's, we don't wanna have fraction failure trails here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting some feedback from people. I don't know.
So what do you guys wanna do? You wanna go back to Article 1 and redo this, or do you wanna continue and just place from Article 4?
Well, Article 1, we do, we certainly support. I mean, that's just boilerplate. Article 2, I mean, I went through all these specials and just assumed, I guess. It's like, well, with the specials, I guess we're just gonna say yes. But when we get to the annual, then I have reservations on some. But John, the issue is, in the past, we always do have in the printed warrant for the town meeting, Finance Committee recommendations and Support of Selectmen recommendations, printed right out so people can read it.
Correct.
So this, this one is just the thing that's getting posted notifying the inhabitants. The, I will have them, I've seen the, the way it's been done in previous years. We'll have the recommendations up when we do talk about the motions, and that'll be handed out in the, in the information packet.
So you're saying it will look the same at town meeting as it always does. It's just, we don't have that now, right now. We just don't have that, the half of it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's remove the recommendation on Article 4 and continue. We already have a motion and a second, correct?
Yep.
Just Article 4. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, Article 5.
Article 5 is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $11,250 from free cash to pay for the purchase of a highway berm curber or take any action in relation thereto.
I'm looking for a motion to place Article 5.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 6.
Article 6 is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 from free cash to pay for improvements to private gravel roads in the Town of Hanson or take any other action in relation thereto.
I'm looking for a motion to place Article 6.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 7.
Article 7 is to see if the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation by deleting Sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new Sections 11A through 11E as printed below.
Okay, so that was Article 7, so we're looking for a motion to place Article 7.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. So that looks like it for the special, right, John?
Yes.
Okay. I got two copies of the special. I'm gonna have to pull the annual up on my iPad because I have two copies of the special, it looks like.
Okay. Would you like me to read Article 1? Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, and actually, to expedite, why don't we look, I'm looking at Articles 1 and 2 and 3 and, well, I don't know, I'm not sure about 4, but 1, 2, and 3, it's like, I imagine we're going to recommend as well as place.
Yeah, because they're not really super financial. I mean, you know, the $20,000, but the rest of them aren't. But I, John, I had a question. I know that we had voted to have some additional language put into the town report, the 2019 town report, and I picked up a copy of it at the town clerk's office last Tuesday, I believe, and I did not see the additional language, at least it wasn't in the selectmen's portion of the town report.
It's on the inside of the front cover.
Okay, I figured I was just missing it somewhere, but, you know, all right, thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we could, we could probably place and recommend, because Article 4 is the increase for the town clerk and the tree warden. So it looks like we could, we could place and recommend up into Article 4, so Article 1 on the annual town meeting.
To hear reports of the various town officers committees, special committees, and act thereon. Or do you want, no, I mean, I'm used to reading every one of them. If you don't want me to read them, that's fine, but.
No, no, I want you to read them.
You want me to read them? Okay. So that was Article 1.
Okay, so looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 1.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 2.
To see if the town will authorize the Treasurer Collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2021 as permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or take any act, any other action in relation thereto.
I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 2.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 3.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from overlay surplus to pay for the purpose of funding the Treasurer Collector's tax title account or take any other action in relation thereto.
I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 3.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 4, John.
Article 4 is to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all paid elected officers and committees of the town as follows or take any other action in relation thereto.
I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 4, please.
So moved by Matt?
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss. Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, Article Five.
To see if the town will approve the amended Whitman Hansen Regional School District Agreement as stated below or take any other action in relation thereto.
Okay. So we should talk about this one for a second. So it, what do you guys think about this article? I'll tell you what I think and then we can go around. I personally think that the board should support this. Obviously, I'm not going to tell you how to vote, but I think this is something that's extremely important on, you know, getting it done. Is it, is it the best solution that we wanted? No. You know, there was several roadblocks getting here, you know, we didn't like how we got here, but you know, a- as far as the residents of town and the town of Hanson, I think this is 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 the best possible deal um that we can get right now. Anybody else have any comments before we do anything with this?
Yep, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Hickey.
Kenny, I will not be able to second this. I've stated from the beginning that um I was against this. And so I I I I know it's, it is what it is, but I can't second this motion, just so you know upfront. Um I don't agree with it. Uh I don't agree with the whole idea of it that um you know, we're going to go through with this, yet the school committee itself is still six to four in Whitman's favor. So um we'll need someone else to second this one.
Did somebody make a motion? I I didn't even, I don't think we've got a motion, do we, Kenny?
No, but.
No, but Laura, at the beginning, at the beginning, Matt was gonna um do it, and then I was going to second everything, and I can't.
Oh, oh, I I got you, okay. Yeah, you know, and I'm sorry if I missed that memo and cut in on a couple of those. I I didn't know you guys had had um said that. Um I um this is probably one of the most difficult um articles that I've seen, at least in the three some odd years that I've been on this Board of Selectmen. And and it's because of what Jim alluded to, or maybe not even alluded, actually said, which is, look, I I don't like where we're at, you know, um what 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 should have been an organic uh conversation that should have been, you know, hey, um we, it turns out, we could have been using statutory all along. We feel kind of ripped off. Um can you guys sit down at the table with us and talk about what other agreement we could come up with? Didn't end up being that conversation, and I'm sure that um the school district was really well intentioned and kind of, for lack of a better word, doing a bit of an end run around that process um and proposing that we have this hybrid methodology. And if it were a one-time agreement and we were able to go back to the table and talk about a long-term agreement, I probably would feel more inclined, and I'm not saying that ultimately we wouldn't go to statutory. Like, I'm not really drawing any conclusions about where those conversations would go. But I think that um there's a fundament, there's some fundamental pieces that are missing to this that I think are critical for a partnership, which is an open dialogue, a conversation of mutual respect and acknowledgement of what this means to each side. Um you know, tho- those types of things, my that, so that's like my kind of rational, looking at the the legal side of it. We're giving, and look, do I know that it's a it's an outside shot that we would ever get per pupil ever, ever again in the future? I know that. I'm a realist. I'm totally pragmatic, and I get it. That as Jim stated, the the deck is stacked against us. And and I've done some discussions with Christine Lynch at at Desi and with Kate prior to that about what would it take for us to get that five-five membership? Because if we could get the five-five membership and it was a one-time deal, I'd kind of be like, you know what? Uh we'll have balance on the board. It's a one-time deal. We're meeting them in the middle, and we'll talk about it later. And try, you know, but like try to get through this year and, you know, and yes, it will be some pain for us, but acknowledging, and I do want to acknowledge that there have been partners and Whitman that have stuck their neck out on this, you know? I mean, they're getting pressure from their guys to say just statutory a hundred percent all the way. And we've had three members of their Board of Selectmen say, look, I hear what our FinCom's saying. I, we're hearing some pressure from people, but we don't want to destroy the district. We're going to try to, you know, come, we'll, we'll try to support this. So I do want to acknowledge that, and I want to acknowledge that there's good people on the school committee as well who have tried to be good partners. But what it feels like to me is like, like you said, Kenny, like you started off, like, this is the best we're going to get. But it and yeah, it probably is the best we're going to get, but don't we deserve to be able to have a conversation about that and see it all the way through? I I I just feel like it's sort of being dictated to us, and I, and it doesn't feel right. Um but then the other side of me is saying I, we didn't get the override. So there's eight hundred thousand dollars towards this school assessment that's off the table, right? This is another five hundred thousand dollars towards the school assessment. And if we don't vote to place this on the warrant, then that's off the table. And we know that if this goes full statutory, um one-twelfth, we're on the hook for ten point nine, and we've got ten point four in our budget. So I know that really doesn't tell you where I stand because I feel incredibly conflicted about this. I really do. I I feel very, very conflicted. I don't want to add to the possibility that, you know, there are going to be dire straits for the schools, and I certainly don't want to be laying people off um in town to try to make this school budget. And what I really am hoping is that the school goes back and says, geez, you know, we could, and I, and I know they're not miracle workers, and I know that they've quote-unquote sharpened their pencils, but maybe they could find some savings. And in my dreams, I hope that, you know, maybe the folks from Whitman would say, you know what? We'll back off of making you guys go to statutory next year and just have a conversation. But I've, that said, I have heard from um Randy, and I've heard their meetings, and um I will say they have not stuttered. They're pretty clear about it. So.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? You know, my my concern is this fails at town meeting, at either town meetings, that we're going to go right to that ten point nine million. And if we get to December first, there's no guarantee that ten point nine million is going to be even in place. It could be even more. So, you know, it's it's the financial aspect is the reason why I'm going to support this. Um but anyways, go ahead.
You guys, can I interrupt for one second on the language piece? Um just a practical, not the substance of the agreement. Um the question I have is, do you want to put in the warrant the actual substance of the agreement as changed? Or do you want to say as, you know, eh, provide a handout? Because my question for you, and you know the players, and you've had the discussions more than I have, if there's any possibility of changing what's agreed to here, you don't want your warrant to print the actual language? And then you can just ha- have a handout at town meeting as presented in the, and you move it as presented in the handout? Um so so I don't know if there's any possibility of that happening, if it's like, you know, n- never going to happen. It's fine to leave it as is, but I'm just throwing that out there from a legal perspective of scope.
So Kate, I can answer that question. Unfortunately, there'll be no changes between now and town meeting. I'll just leave it at that.
Got it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um I want to um say that I agree with Jim and Laura, full-heartedly on both accounts. Um I'm not going to be able to make a motion to move this for, this agreement forward. Um I agree with you, yeah, financially, that might be the most responsible thing to do. But right at the moment, it's not the most responsible thing to do for the town in my eyes is to up um move the article um when the public has had no opportunity to really give their opinion on this new agreement. It's, we've been in this since COVID, and I've heard from a lot of people that they are frustrated that they can't voice their own concerns. Um, you know, I know that I'm open to do maybe a fifty-fifty split just for this fiscal year. And then over the course of this fiscal year, we can work towards a new agreement where both towns can sit down and have that conversation. I know I voiced that concern to Bob Hayes, and it kind of gone unheard. Uh and we were just had impasse with our conversation. But um you know, I that that's where I stand on it. I'm not going to be able to move it forward.
So Matt, that's the town meeting, I'm sorry, Mr. Bloss. I was just going to say, that's what town meeting is for, Matt, for that discussion. You know, so people can stand up and give their opinion. Mr. Bloss, go ahead.
Well, that's, that's true. Um my question is, if we don't move, if we don't place this article, does that mean we simply remove it from the warrant? Yes, Kate says yes. Um because I.
The warrant, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be an option.
All right, first of all, just cynically, because we have heard Whitman so vehemently opposed to this, where I I can't, I have no faith that Whitman's going to approve this amendment either. So if one town's not going to prove it, we're not. So I think part of it's an optics thing. Um and other than that, I just agree with Laura. I agree with Jim. It's like, you know what? If this was just, if this was for just this one year, that would be one thing. But this is for two years and perpetuity. And to have the Board of Selectmen say, we agree for perpetuity, we will go statutory after this year, and that ends the discussion. I don't see we should be going in that direction.
Well, it it seems um Laura and I kind of started this uh thing going here. But um as an elected official, I think we have um an obligation to let the people decide. If we do not vote to put this on the warrant, as Matt said, nobody gets to talk about it. Whether it it, you know, it passes a town meeting or not. Um I I I think we have the obligation to the people of Hanson to make sure that it gets placed so that they could talk about it.
So what I, so why don't I, Ken, I'll, I'll make the motion to put it on the law.
What I would, what I would suggest that the board do, now that I've heard everyone's opinions, is that we vote to place it and defer it to town meeting.
I I I but I can't, okay, I I hear what you're saying, and um I'm sorry, I'm having some kind of weird video issue um today. But um I I hear what you're saying, and that's, you know, I'll defer to the rest of the group. But um to Kate's point, wouldn't it be better for us? I know that Matt has talked to Bob Hayes, and I know, Kenny, you're feeling like, hey, there's no chance in hell or whatever. Um but wouldn't it be better for us to to take that path to at least place, you know, put a placeholder and actually pass out the language in the hopes that we can just really one more time with feeling like rally and say, guys, we're really asking like, can we remove, you know, the um the language about the um, you know, about it going to statutory? Or can we put in a five-five membership in that? Can we, you know, like, I I have a feeling that they would be willing to go to the five-five, but you know, we'd need to have Kate look at the legality of doing that, and if this is the right methodology for changing the membership. Because I think that five-five membership is rather key to everything. Um so I guess that's my longer-winded way of saying, I hear what you're saying about placing it. And I guess some would argue that now we're allowing two hundred people that are going to show up at town meeting to make a decision for the entire town. Um a- and I know, and then we can counter-argue, well, then everybody should show up at town meeting. Um so, you know, I I I'm just echoing what I've heard, what people have have expressed to me in terms of concerns.
The only thing that I can say, I've only been chair for a week, and I've already tried to reach out to the other side, and they're not willing to meet. That's the only thing.
Okay, I mean, I, I I mean, I, I'm not the chair. Uh but I do continue to have an open line of communication with people. Um and as I mentioned to you before, I'd be more than glad to open that line of communication up for you as the new chair, um or do whatever I can to help.
Okay, so why don't we place Article Five, and we'll bring the discussion back up on the twenty first.
All right, so Wes, Wes will move.
Okay.
I just want, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that we're put, we're replacing the the article the way we have it in, written in the uh warrant. Or as what Kate suggested, the open-ended to see, you know, the district agreement as on file with the town clerk. The hopes that some.
As an insert, and and hopefully somebody's going to play ball between now and then.
We've got nothing to lose. It gives us just a little more versatility, a little bit, just a very, very small window of opportunity. And I'm not delusional, but I am hopeful.
So I I just wanted to kind of ask Kate to make sure I have the wording properly, because we're going to be, so the 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 uh amended wording that they're talking about now, the board's considering is to see if the town will vote to approve the amended Whitman Hansen Regional School District Agreement on file with the town clerk.
That's correct. Or take any action.
Or take any other action in relation there too. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second to place Article Five?
I will second it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye, to place.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye.
And can I just ask one more question? If we get to the point where we find that there is an impasse, and we're still not happy with it, and we don't really want to present it at town meeting, are we able to pass over that article, Kate?
Yeah, you can, you can pass over an article for sure.
Okay.
I mean, we did it, for example, we did it the last time we tried to amend the agreement, we passed over because it turned out it had a complete review or something, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Okay. So Article Six.
To determine what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate by taxation, transfer from free cash, transfer from county ambulance funds, water department revenue, water surplus, Title V Special Revenue Fund, M W P A T loan repayments receipts, reserve for appropriation, conservation notice of intent fund, overlay surplus, and fund balance reserved for reduction of future excluded debt, the freight charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year or take any other action in relation thereto.
John, this is a standard article. We should be fine recommending this, correct?
This is just the standard boilerplate article for the budget, uh for the water, for the, for the general fund, the water, and um, you know, everything that you, recreation, no, I'm sorry, not recreation, just water and general fund.
Right, okay. So I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article Six.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay. Article Seven.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following, following sums of money to operate the Recreation Department during fiscal year twenty twenty-one under the provisions of M G L, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half.
Okay, so this is another standard, correct, John?
Yes, this is the, the uh Recreation Budget for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one as presented by the commission.
Uh I'm going to suggest, though, Ken, that this and the next article on the transfer station, we do need to wait for the FinCom.
Okay, I agree.
Hundred percent.
I agree. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place Article Seven, please.
So moved by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article Eight, please, John.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums of money to operate the transfer station during fiscal year twenty twenty-one under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half.
I'm looking for a motion to place Article Eight.
So moved by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement. Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article Nine.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2021 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2021, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Now, can I suggest this and possibly the next one, we also probably could recommend, since I don't see the taxation as involved?
I agree. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article One.
To move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article Ten, John.
To see if the town will vote to adopt the Capital Improvement Program as presented by the Capital Improvement Committee, or take any other action in relation there, too.
I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article Ten.
To move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
I had a quick question, for John, through you, Mr. Chair. For number four on the matrix, ventilation in kitchen, food and electric work for recreation. Is that the grant from Josh Cutler?
That's the next article, Mr. Dyer, that this one is just the, it's required that the Capital Improvement Committee present a plan to the town, and it's on a town meeting, so that's in Article 11, and no, it is not the grant amount when we get there.
Thank you. So I, uh-
Okay, thanks, Matt. Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, next up is Article 11.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate and or transfer from available funds to various department capital accounts for the following items, or take any other action in relation there, too.
I'm looking for a motion to place Article 11.
To move.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. So that's something, obviously, we need FinCom to help us out with. Article 12, John.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sum of money to capital accounts for the following Whitman-Hanson Regional High School items, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, John, this article here, what's your thoughts on this one?
I I think we should recommend it. I I have it in there in the matrix. It's for 14,000 for guidance and sped counseling area reconfiguration. I I worked with Town Accountant Todd Hassett, and and Finance Committee Chairman Kevin Sullivan. And I don't know how the full Finance Committee will vote, but they were in agreement on this one.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 12.
Well, wait a minute, are we recommending now, too? I I thought we were gonna wait to recommend all of the town, the regular town warrant articles until we heard what the FinCom guys were doing, but we were placing them.
That's understandable, what John just said, but if you want to wait, then that's fine. Did you hear-
Well, I I just, the reason I ask is, you know, as much as I think that special ed and, you know, guidance counseling is super important, especially, well, more than ever, I mean, just more than ever right now. I I, if we're in a position where we're gonna be looking at having to cut positions in our staff, I I I don't know, I'm just nervous about putting something like this on the warrant, and then we are going to have to pay for it if if, you know, if it passes, and is that gonna be $14,000 less that we've got to spend in another way in our budget?
We can wait until the 21st to recommend.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Matt.
Through you to John, is it possible to get a little bit more detail on this, too, because I want to say, I've heard this, but I could be wrong, that that, you know, part of this reconfiguration was to take down a couple of walls so that the guidance office didn't have walls around it. You know, I mean, exactly what Lawrence was saying, you know, right now we're in a financial crisis. I don't think that, you know, $14,000 is gonna be spent well to take down walls. You know, I mean, ju- you know, just because they want it to be more of an open concept. But is it possible, John, to get like kind of more detail on that?
Yes, I can reach out to Ernie Sandlin and and Superintendent Simonak and figure out, again, whatever information they have on it. Again, I saw their matrix, and saw their, you know, very short explanation, but I could get a lot more if you'd like.
That'd be great, thank you. So I would move, I would move to place.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 13, John.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,000 from the Community Preservation Committee's Historical Resources Reserve Fund to pay for the purchase and placement of historical markers throughout the town, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, so Article 13's Community Preservation, so I'm comfortable placing and recommending Article 13.
So moved, and 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 I I I'm comfortable with that, too, Kenny, because this money can only, as you know, having been on the Community Preservation, it can only be used for certain specific reasons, and they've already vetted it the whole entire committee, so I feel comfortable. It's not coming out of free cash or stabilization or even general funds. It's it's money that's specifically allocated for this, so.
Yep, I agree. Okay, so do I have a second? Laura moved it.
Second, Jim.
Article 13, guys.
Jim seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Jim. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 14, John.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and enter into a contract for the expenditure of any allocated or to be allocated funds by the Commonwealth and or county pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 90, for the construction, reconstruction, and improvements of town roads, said sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, or take any other action in relation there, too.
How about we recommend, replace and recommend?
Thank you.
Agreed, and John, didn't we get, we know what that money is, right? Didn't Cutler just tell us what we got? I want to say last Friday, we found out what that amount was.
Yes, and I don't have that that handy yet, but you're, it was, it was, the overall amount was not the 300 million that was discussed Commonwealth-wide, it was only the 200 million that we normally get, so it'll be the same as we got last year, but pretty close to it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 14.
To move from Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 15, John.
To see if the town will vote to set the spending limits of the following revolving accounts in accordance with Hanson General Bylaw, Article Two dash nine, Section Three, as follows, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, so this is for the revolving accounts, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 15.
To move from Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 16, John.
To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section Five, Clause 22G, inserted by Chapter 208 of the Acts of 2018, known as an Act Relative to Veterans' Benefits, Rights, Appreciation, Validation, and Enforcement, or the Brave Act, signed into law on August 28, 2018, which provides for a property tax exemption for any real estate that is is the domicile of a person, but is owned by a trustee, conservator, or other fiduciary for the person's benefit, if the real estate would be eligible for exemption under Clause 22 or Clause 22A through Clause 22F, if the person was the owner of the real estate, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 16, please.
To move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, Article 17, John.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen on terms and conditions they determine to be most beneficial to the town to enter into a community choice aggregation program and contract for electrical supply, for electric supply for Hanson residents and or businesses, and to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the same, as per Mass. General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 134, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, so this is that community, that bulk agreement?
Yep.
That was-
That Mary Ann talked to us about, yep.
Okay, all right, excellent. So I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 17, please.
Kenny, I'll make a motion to place, but I don't think I'd be able to recommend.
No?
Can can you expand upon that, Matt?
Sure. I just don't, I mean, I I don't mind placing it on the warrant, but I'm just personally not necessarily for for community choice aggregation right at the moment, just because I've heard from many people that they're concerned on how to, they're they're all confused about it. And I think I agree with them, because if you're not paying attention, we only have 100 people going to town meeting. And, you know, si- you know, same kind of conversation that we just had, we have 100 people go to town meeting, and now your electric bill change, if you know, I mean, if you're not one of those 100 people, and you're saying to yourself, wait, why did this happen? So I I don't think that it's a great, I mean, I'm all for clean energy, don't get me wrong, I'm Mr. Sustainability, but I just don't think this is right to just change people's electric bills without their consent.
And i- i- in, I thought that Mary Ann told us that there was a so you're saying you do not need to affirmatively elect to have this changed on an individual level, that the town opts in and you have to opt out?
Correct, you know, from from my understanding of it, if it was to say the town moves forward with it, the Board of Selectmen's vote to say yes to it, if you're not paying attention to what's going on, you're automatically opted into this program, and you have to opt out, from what I understand.
Okay, can we, because I I I, that's why I was like, can you please explain, because you are Mr. Sustainability? And so I was in a state of shock when you said that you, you know, wouldn't necessarily vote to recommend. Maybe we could vote to place it, and can we circle back and verify with Mary Ann about the mechanics, John? I just, because that wasn't what I thought I heard Mary Ann say, because I definitely would have been more concerned if it was negative consent approach, as you've described.
That is what I heard Mary Ann say.
Okay.
She said that when she, when we were in the room.
We can refer to town meeting, too, right? We could place and just refer to town meeting, because Mary Ann, someone is going to have to stand up in front of town meeting and explain this to the meeting, anyway, and probably explain to us again. Jim, I mean, Jim, Hickey and I had a conversation a while back, and we laughed, saying, our electricity is coming in through, what, East Bridgewater? The Middle Borough, Hanson has no substations, whatever, it all is coming in from other towns. What if East Bridgewater isn't doing this, and Hanson thinks they are, but where's the control? So I think it needs to be explained.
Yep, fair enough.
You guys want to vote to place and refer to town meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so somebody want to move that?
To move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
You're on TV. Aye.
Try to pay attention, Mr. Hickey.
Obviously, there's a lot of stuff going around in my house tonight. I'm trying to find a room by myself.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye.
Kate, aren't we fun? Or Jim, anyway.
I was just saying to one of your employees how much I love the town of Hanson every single time.
Mr. Stanbrook, Article 18, sir.
To see if the town will vote to delete all references to the phrase "highway surveyor" in the town bylaws, and replace those instances with the phrase "highway director," or take any other action in relation there, too.
So I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 18.
So move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 19.
To see if the town will vote to amend the Wage and Personnel Bylaws, Article Two dash 12, Classification and Compensation by deleting Sections 12EA in its entirety, and inserting a new Section 12EA as printed below, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, any questions on this article?
Nope.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 19.
So move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 20.
To see if the town will vote to amend the General Bylaws by inserting a new section as follows, related to non-substantive renumbering, or take any other action in relation there, too.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 20.
So move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 21, John.
To see if the town will vote to amend the General Bylaw, Article One dash one, Articles Related Relating to Town Meeting, Section 1A, by deleting those portions marked with and with crossed out as follows, or take any action in relation there, too.
Now, can I just clarify, will this be amended prospectively in the event that there's similar types of situations, or like COVID doesn't go away, or is this just a one-time amendment? I'm reading it as though it's prospectively.
Yeah, so it's prospectively, because the way a lot of towns, most towns, I would say, do their election and town meeting, is you post a separate warrant for each. It just gives the clerk flexibility, and what we ran into here, and in a case, it was an unusual circumstance that drew it to our attention, but because our town meeting was after the election, we were technically in violation of the bylaw. Now there was emergency legislation for all that stuff. But what happens if, I don't know, Beth breaks her leg or something, and, you know, she's got to do something different? So this allows you to have them not connected, the election and the town meeting, so that she can post her election warrant, and you can post your town meeting warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? So I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 21, please.
To move by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
Mitchell, aye. Article 22, Mr. Stanbrook.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to amend Chapter 41 of the Acts of 2006- an act establishing a town administrator in the town of Hanson as follows, or take any other action in relation there to.
Do you want to sum up this article briefly, John, please?
Do you want me to do it? Um, so Mary, before she left, um, it was brought to our attention that there was some lack of clarity, this is how it arose. There was lack of clarity as to the staff at Camp Kawani. Um, and, and we wanted to ensure that those appointments were made by the town administrator. And then, um, I actually butted my nose in and you can dislike it if you want and change it. Um, but it's much simpler to have the appointing authority be the, the entity that's the CEO, namely you all, um, for, for some of these other positions. Because the other boards are more volunteer boards that are there, you know, because conservation, they want to, you know, protect the wetlands and all of this stuff. But for the employment purposes, it's much more modern, I would say, to have that housed with the CEO.
And Kate, you're not suggesting that, um, John wouldn't collaborate with those committees and, you know, perhaps like have joint interviews or something like that. But, you know, um, I personally think it's a good idea because let's face it, um, Mr. Stanbrook is the one who ultimately is going to handle whatever human resource issues may or may not happen as a result of a good or bad hire. Um, and the way that this has been, you know, the way that we've been doing it traditionally has been to have a group of well-intentioned volunteers, um, be the entity that may or may not hire. And again, you remember this came up around that recreation, um, administrative assistant, I think. The Recreation Commission, um, really felt like, you know, they weren't being honored in that, in that decision, that they weren't being respected and that there was a lack of clarity about who was supposed to be hiring. And so, um, at that time, Kate said, I really think you guys need to go back and strengthen what you're doing. So.
Yeah, so the, the worst part of a manager's job is dealing with HR issues and it's better to centralize that to folks who have the same support, whether it be through your labor council with John and, and, and those issues. So it's, it, it cleans it up.
Okay, any more questions? Mr. Bloss.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 22, please.
So moved by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Article 23, Mrs. Stanbrook.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court in compliance with Clause Number 1, Section 8 of Article Roman Numeral 89 of the Amendments of the Constitution, to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows. The General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the town administrator approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court. The town administrator is hereby authorized to approve amendments that shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. And it goes on for several pages, or take any other action in relation there to.
So this article.
I'm sorry, Kenny.
I, I was, I was just going to say, um, I, I don't know where this article came from. This is the first time, um, that I saw it.
This was the whole, this was something we had discussed with Kate and Jay um, when we were discussing our legal options quite a while ago, um, like maybe back in November. And Kate, I guess, is it to say that we have the right to continue to use that per pupil methodology or do we want to, um, compel the school district or the school committee, rather, to continue to use the per pupil methodology? I, I'm just, I just want to make sure that the language is.
So, um, what it is, is this is essentially makes it incumbent upon the school district to apply the per pupil, um, assessment methodology.
Okay.
So this, Kate, I mean, if this is something that the legislator took, I mean, I would think because you're in a regional school district, that Whitman would have some type of say in this, no?
Yeah, I wouldn't take a hazard to guess of what the legislature will do with this.
Yeah, I, I don't know. What do you guys, let's go on, what do you guys think? Matt, what do you think?
I think if it gives us more options at the negotiating table, I'm all for it. Um, you know, I mean, and it doesn't hurt to send it up to Beacon Hill and if it doesn't get approved, it doesn't get approved. If it's entertained, it's entertained, if it's denied, it's denied. But I think this would also just give us one more option, um, for negotiating if it was to be approved.
Okay, Jim, what do you think?
I absolutely agree with Matt, um, why not, you know?
Okay, Mr. Bloss. Yeah, I agree and Kenny with you. I mean, until I read this in the warrant, I had no idea. It's like, where did this come from? So Matt did tell me that it had been in the works, but I missed it completely. If it, if it was ever brought up in public, whatever, so. I mean, I don't, I don't have the greatest memory, but I just don't recall talking about this, but that's fine.
Yeah, this was, um, I, I will say, um, there's also another bill that Josh Cutler filed aside from this, um, on his own, um, he and Brady have filed. Um, but this was something that I think Josh had suggested to us, Kate, yeah.
I think so, that's, that's how it was presented to me, that Josh had suggested that that's, um, perhaps an avenue that you could explore.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so I'm looking for a motion to place and recommend Article 23.
So moved by Matt.
Second by Jim.
Roll call vote, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Ms. Kement.
Aye.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Okay, boy, that's a long one. So that looks like it. Right, John?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. All right, so that is done. So next, under new business, discuss the formation of deregionalization committee. So Mr. Hickey asked me if we, if I would put this on the agenda and I agreed with him 110%. Um, people have been talking about it and, um, you know, it, it's something that we at least have to explore. You know, I have my own opinion on it, but my opinion doesn't matter. So I think tonight we should figure out how many members that, you know, do we want to appoint, what type of members? Do we want to have one selectman, two selectmen? How many people from the committee? Do we want to have a five-member committee? Do we want to have a seven-member committee? Um, what do you guys think? We'll start with Mr. Bloss, because his hand is up.
Before you guys start, um, do you guys want me to stay on or jump off? What's your pleasure?
Thank you very much, good night.
Thanks, Kate.
Hold on, but before you go, Kate, would we need her for, uh, opium class action?
No.
Okay.
John knows that.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you, have a good night, guys.
Hey, take care.
You too.
Okay. Mr. Bloss, the floor is yours. I was actually just saying, five-member committee, don't, don't make it big and cumbersome. Keep it as streamlined as possible. Okay, and do you think we should have, you know, I mean, I was thinking maybe at least a selectman, maybe somebody from FinCom if, you know, somebody has the time. And then what, three residents at large? Or do you guys want, you think two selectmen?
No, I think three. Kenny, may I just, and, and this may be a nuance, but I think it's an important nuance. I, I would really like to call this a deregionalization feasibility committee. Because I think when you call it a deregionalization committee, it seems as though it's a foregone conclusion that we're going to deregionalize instead of that you're going to look at the feasibility of deregionalization. And I think that's a very important nuance.
Name in the committee was actually one of the things that we're going to talk about, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that at all. So five members, is that what you guys think?
I think so, keep it lean and mean.
Okay, so we should put out, so Greer, can we send an email maybe to the Chair of FinCom and request to see if, if somebody from FinCom's available?
Okay, sure.
And, and then we should post, I don't know how we normally do it. We should post three citizens at large. Um, is there a selectman that wants to volunteer to be on this committee? Mr. Hickey's raising his hand, or the camera's frozen, one of the two.
No, I'm raising my hand.
Okay, so.
You know, we did discuss this three other times. I just want to remind people, this is not the first time we've discussed forming a deregionalization committee.
Okay.
No, you're correct, Laura, but at the time, we were still in negotiations and, uh, it got brought up quickly and, um, you know, the ninth hour is here. So it's time.
So how are we going to pick the three members? Will we just get, hopefully, hopefully, we're going to, I, I know of several people. I'm sure people have reached out to you, to you guys and said, you know, if you guys put together a committee, I'd be interested in being part of that. So will we have, uh, you know, all of the resumes and, you know, like applications and then just sort of sort through or?
We should set a date and allow people, you know, three weeks or so to fill out an application, send them in, and then we'll review them anytime we make any appointments to any committee, I think. I don't think we should do it any different.
Okay, and, but we've got that requirement to have people, um, have that interview with Greer and John before we put them on a committee. So hopefully Greer and John could still do that, but like virtually or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they could. And the other thing too is, um, which John will be talking about, I want to steal his thunder, is Town Hall is going to be open, um, to appointment only next week. So I'm sure these folks could find the time to sit with John or virtually, however John wants to do it, that would be up to him, but yeah, we would definitely want that. I think it's just a matter of figuring out, so we know we've got five members, one selectman, we'll reach out to FinCom, so that's three members at large. It's just a matter of figuring out, you know, a fair amount of time to give people to be able to fill it out.
Well, what resources are we going to give this committee? Because I think, you know, we need to make sure that they, the, obviously, the elephant in the room is, what is the short-term cost, what is the long-term cost? Where is the cost versus ben- benefit, um, you know, fulcrum there? Like at what point, eh, you know, is it that we're going to be paying statutory? At which point it becomes more cost-effective for us to deregionalize? And that seems like an awful lot for a group of volunteers to try to figure out. Are we freeing up Todd Hassett to be a resource here? Is John going to be a resource, uh, knowing that they've, they're already stretched quite thin? Uh, who are we giving them for a resource?
Well, I was going to talk to, um, I figured we would form the, at least how many people, start working on the people and then figure out where they're going to get their information through, you know?
Okay.
Um, I don't think we have all the answers tonight, but like Jim said, I think it's the ninth hour and we need to start somewhere. So, you know, if we start tonight by at least forming the committee, we give it 30 days for everyone to come in, that gives us a little time, you know? I, I mean, anybody jump in anytime you want and then we'll figure out how to, how to get the resources, you know?
So what's our, like, what, what, Jim, in your mind, like, what were you hoping, like, in terms of it, like a time, timeline to come up with, you know, the pros and cons and all that good stuff?
Well, I think, you know, uh, without talking to John, um, and volunteering him for this, I think obviously John would be a resource and Todd would be a resource. Um, but it, I would imagine it's going to take two to three months to come up with any kind of, um, uh, report that I could bring to the board. Um, you know, I've already been in contact, um, with Pembroke. Um, and I am waiting to talk to FinCom. Um, uh, you know, I don't want to have, um, I don't want to make up figures. I would rather it be factual and truthful, um, that we could get a, you know, basically a ballpark figure. We know what it's going to cost this year, Laura, you alluded to that. So what's it going to cost next year? What's it going to cost in year three? And, you know, so by the time we get to year five, you know, is it, is it so much money to Hanson that we don't have a choice?
Right.
Um, uh, you know, you can't get, um, blood out of a stone, so.
And now, Jim, in addition to the financial implications, which I think are the ones that everybody's the most concerned with, um, it seems to me like we'll probably need Kate to walk us through what the legal requirements are to disband. We know some of it, you know, that the both town meetings have got a vote and all that other good stuff. But like, you know, what are we on the hook to give them? How does that all work, you know? So there's that component too. So I agree, I think two to three months is even, even ambitious, but go for it. I mean, you know, everybody's home, so maybe.
Right, and well, you know, uh, I'm on the, I'm on the streetlight committee and the drainage committee. Um, and, you know, those don't really do much.
Right.
So this will give me an opportunity to, to be on a committee that actually, um, will do some good.
Well, did anybody else have any questions? Laura, what was your name? So I think we should form the committee.
I thought it should be deregionalization feasibility committee. So you're looking at the feasibility of deregionalizing, because that's really what you're doing.
Right, absolutely.
Are you moving that?
Oh, okay, sure, I didn't know we were, we were going to be formal. I'm sure, yeah, um, deregional, I move that we name this committee the deregionalization feasibility committee.
With one selectman, go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to second it, but yeah, if we have the one finance, one selectman and three people at large.
And why don't we say so, John, if you said if we're not meeting, why don't we put the cutoff at like, why don't we say the fourth? Because we're not meeting on the fourth, or is that too much time? That gives people just under 30 days. And then when's our meeting after the fourth? Is it the 11th? I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have a calendar in front.
It would be the 11th, yeah.
It'll be 11th. So you guys want to do a cutoff on the 4th of August? That gives people almost 30 days, gives us enough time to get applications in and then we can review them all on the 11th and, and get going right after, um, town meeting.
Sounds great.
Yeah, that sounds good to me because, Jim, do you think you might be able to kind of like, um, turn up the heat and maybe have something in advance of our fall town meeting?
Now you're putting the pressure on me, but yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, no, I'm just thinking like it's, it's not quite three months. It would be like two and a half months, but I mean, it's a goal anyway, right? I mean, if you don't have it, then you don't have it, but if we do, then, you know, um, you know.
You're, realistically, you're, you're looking at, so October town meeting would be October 5th. You'd, you'd be giving the guy just under 60 days, that's next to impossible. Certainly, you can raise the bar, Mr. Hickey, but that's going to be difficult.
And who knows, Kenny, we may not have, end up having our fall town meeting in October, you know?
Yeah, that's true too. Yep, depending on how things go. Okay, Mr. Dyer.
Um, I, I think pushing it to the fall town meeting might be too quick. I'd much rather have Beatharo, um, and have the numbers as accurate as we can. So I think, you know, you know, giving them till next spring meeting might be more feasible and more accurate than pushing up, you know, pushing us into the fall. I, I applaud, you know, the effort of like, oh, two to three months. But I think realistically, with a group of volunteers, I think two to three months to come up with a decision or a recommendation like this may be a lot, especially, you know, trying to share resources of John and Todd. Um, one other quick thought, um, would be, you know, I think one person, we should have one person that's advocating for the schools. I don't know if a, a school committee member would be, you know, would, would that be a conflict of interest? Would it put them in an awkward position? I'm not sure, but having someone that's going to be there to advocate, you know, I mean, I know we all care about the kids and we want to advocate for them, but I think that's just something to ask.
I, I'd like that, yeah.
But, um, that one of the, instead of three citizens at. That one of the, instead of three citizens at large, maybe two citizens at large and one school committee member?
I don't think it should be a school committee member, I I mean, just my own personal feeling, I think it should be somebody who is a I don't want to say school supporter, because then it divides people into these two categories and I, it's a false narrative. But I'd like to say like a Melissa Valachovic, you know, or like somebody that we know is is not necessarily on the school committee, but would get our vote for school committee because we know everything that she does for the schools.
I mean, I think anybody that's going to apply to be appointed in this position is going to be for the schools, I mean, I think that's probably foregone, you know?
I do not think that is the case. I I think that you may have people that with various motives, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Well, that's up to us to
Yep.
to review the applications thoroughly.
Yes.
So, Mr. Dyer, what are you, what are you suggesting?
Yeah, no, I I agree with Laura, you know, it's just making sure that we have, you know, I mean, exactly what you said too, we we get the best who's going to be on this committee, and I think just move forward, just to make sure that we have a balanced approach going forward, I think is the right thing. You know, I mean, I think it'll be a little bit awkward for a school committee member to be on a deregionalization committee when they're advocating for a regional budget, so. But just just making sure that we keep that conscious while we're moving forward, that we have a well-balanced committee, I think is key.
Right, okay, all right, so roll call vote, Mr. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Aye, and I thank Jim for stepping up.
Mr. Bloss.
Aye.
And Mitchell, aye. Yes, and you know what, I don't just thank Jim, I thank Greer, because Jim literally called me at eleven fifty on Friday, and I said, Jim, you know, it's a great idea, but there's no way you can pull it off, I called Greer at eleven fifty-eight, and she answered the phone and said, anything you need, Kenny, no problem, so.
And again, I just want to reiterate, we are not advocating for deregionalization, we are looking into the feasibility, just to be clear.
Mr. Bloss. No, okay, so thank you, Greer.
Yep.
Okay, next we have review the opioid class action litigation settlement offer with Purdue. Mr. Stanberg, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, so we received a, the town received a letter from the National Opioid Litigation, and this is from the firm of Levin, Papantonio, Thomas, and Mitchell, Rafferty, and Proctor, P.A., out of Pensacola, Florida, and it looks like there's some sort of class action going, going on regarding the bankruptcy of Purdue Pharma over opioid litigation. We're part, we're we're included in the in the class action, and what the letter in essence says is that if we don't want to be included in the in the class action, we need to, you know, opt out by July fifteenth, so if we were going to hire our own lawyer and go after, you know, something in the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, we have to tell them in writing by July fifteenth, so if we do nothing, we stay in the litigation and the class action keeps going, we'd have to permanently opt out of it by the fifteenth, and the letter just says that, according to this letter, that they're, what they're asking for is a amount for, out of Hanson, for six million two hundred and thirty-three thousand six ninety-six on the behalf of Hanson, but they also say in the letter that the values depicted are not the amount that you should expect to receive, should funds be dispersed to local governments from the Purdue bankruptcy, the total valuation to all government entities is estimated in the area of two trillion, so only a very small fraction of that amount will ever be available for distribution, so it's a large amount for ask, but again, they, you know, I don't know how much the bankruptcy court has set aside for the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, but it certainly isn't two trillion, so we probably won't get anywhere near that amount, so that, just wanted to bring that before the board, and I assume that we would want to stay in the class action and not hire our own lawyer to go on on our own, I just wanted to make sure that's what the board.
So John, is is there anything that we have to do, do we, do you have to send a letter back, do you have to sign something, or if we just don't do anything, we're considered part of the class action and we just sit around and wait for the check?
Yes, that's correct, if if we don't, if we want to stay in, we don't have to do anything, it's if you want to get out, we have to get out now.
Okay, but it's obviously not costing us any money, so why would we get out?
It is not costing us any money, no.
Okay, any questions? All right, moving on, did you guys review the minutes for May nineteenth, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve minutes for May nineteenth, twenty twenty.
I mean, I'm sorry, I've missed them somehow, I haven't seen those minutes.
Well, you haven't.
I think they were in the Dropbox.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there are eight pages.
Do we have a Dropbox for this week? I'm using six thirty Dropbox.
You know what, you know what, Wes, she changed it to FY twenty twenty-one. So if you look, you'll see a folder that says twenty twenty-one, I I almost got hoodwinked by that myself, and so everything is in that box.
Let's let's table the minutes, so then you have plenty of time to read it.
Okay.
All right. So next up is the Town Administrator Report, Mr. Stanberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I signed the following warrants. I'm sorry, I signed the following warrants on behalf of the Board of Selectmen since the last meeting. A warrant dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, warrant thirty-three V oh-six-two-nine-twenty, it's a negative amount of one thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, it was a vendor warrant, and it was a reissue of stale checks. Another warrant dated June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, warrant fifty-three for a hundred and one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents, and that was a vendor warrant. Another warrant dated June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, warrant fifty-three P R for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents, that was a payroll warrant, the reason why that's higher than most normal payroll warrants is the final payouts to our communication center dispatchers were on that warrant. A warrant dated June, sorry, July second, two thousand twenty, warrant one for one million nine hundred and eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, that's a vendor warrant, and again, one point seven million dollars of that was related to the Plymouth County tax for fiscal year twenty-one, so that was most of what was on that first warrant of the year, we pay all of that upfront. Another, the finally, the final warrant was dated July second, two thousand twenty, warrant one W H for forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, and that was a payroll withholding warrant. Also, the, I've signed Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-three B, transfers on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, those are the transfers that can happen at the at the end of the year, the last two months of the fiscal year, you know, between budget line items. They tried, I did, I signed transfer fiscal year twenty oh-five for a hundred and seventy-four dollars, and that was from planning board salaries to various departments. And again, I, last week, I I think I talked about this, there was one extra leap day that wasn't wasn't budgeted, so we weren't quite exactly on 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 the budget for those, so that a hundred and seventy-four dollars was spread out over six other departments just to take care of that extra one leap day. Transfer fiscal year twenty dash oh-six for ten thousand dollars, and that's from public buildings expenses to legal services expenses, and that's additional services due to the COVID nineteen related pandemic. So the total amount for the fiscal year is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for legal fees, and that was sixty-one thousand for labor, I'm rounding the numbers off, eighty-three thousand for other general counsel work, about three thousand for tax foreclosures, and then there are some other others that are about sixteen hundred, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total in fiscal year twenty. The transfer of fiscal year twenty oh-seven for seventy-five hundred dollars, and that was for veterans from Veterans Assistance to Board of Health V N A Services, and that's additional services due to the COVID nineteen related pandemic. So I've, I have received many emails, I think I've I've been sending them on to you about Camp Kewaunee, several people have wanted to open up the Cove. I think we've been, I think you've been passing them on to the selectmen, and.
Yep. Sorry, go ahead. Can I stop you right there? I just want to speak to that real quick, as far as, because I've I've definitely gotten a few too, so the last meeting last week, we were waiting for the plan. We did receive the plan, but it was after our meeting ended, so I reviewed the plan on Wednesday, I still had some questions regarding the plan. So I reached out to Diane, the Chair of Recreation, and I also reached out to our health agent, Gilbert Amato. So I met both of them at the camp on Friday for over an hour, we went through the full plan at its entirety, everything they were going to do, where they're going to place people, how many people, I must say that I'm satisfied with the plan now that I went down there. There's one small component that I'm waiting for, which I should have probably, hopefully, by Thursday. If if that goes through and I'm satisfied, then I'm willing to put it back on the agenda for the board to vote on it again on next Tuesday on the fourteenth, so you mentioned Camp Kewaunee, I just wanted just to give that update.
Kenny, and are we going to get the, that sounds great, and that's awesome, I think people will be excited about that. Any discussion about having that, the water tested?
Yes, yes, we actually, we did discuss, actually Diane's the one that that brought that up, so, yes, yep, and the health agent is absolutely aware of it, so yes, the water will be tested.
Great.
Yep, sorry, John.
And and I don't think I've gotten any emails about Camp Kewaunee, other than the ones we got last week, I, maybe I'm missing them, I don't know, I.
Greer.
That I got, I don't know.
The ones from last week?
I got it after we ended our meeting on Tuesday night, I got it.
Okay.
So maybe, yeah, you can just send that out, please, when you get a chance tomorrow to the rest of the board.
If it's the one you sent after our meeting, I got that one, yeah, I just, there were other ones.
And in this picture, on the bottom of the plan, the last couple of pages are some pictures and stuff, so. Sorry, John, thank you, Greer.
Okay. So the Hanson Town Administrator Special Act requires me to give the board an update on all outstanding legal matters, I'll send those, those, my update out to you via the regular mail, you know, U.S. Post Office, but it will not be a public document. It may contain personnel, union bargaining, or health-related issues that cannot be discussed in public session, but I have complied with my requirements under the Act for the month of month of June. Moving on to Town Hall reopening, so Health Agent Gil Amato and I discussed opening Town Hall for meetings in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, because that's the largest room that we have here in Town Hall. The the Governor's new guidance was eight person, eight people per thousand square feet, but it also deferred the decision to the local Boards of Health. This Selectmen's Room, where we are tonight, is around seven hundred square feet, so the room could hold about six people. But Mr. Amato had determined that, that he felt that fourteen people could meet in the Selectmen's Meeting Room while maintaining social distancing and, you know, being able to comply with the Governor's mandate, and that would, fourteen would include the board or commissioner members, members of the public, note takers, presenters, that'd be everybody, they'd only be able to have fourteen people. I'm going to try to do this, I don't know if it will work or not, but we've set the room up the way it would look with the fourteen seats, I'm going to try to turn it around, if you can see that, if you can't see that, then this did not work.
Lower the camera, there you go.
About that. So we, it would, we'd be spaced out in the room, all around the room, we're six feet from everyone, we have wipes and sanitizer everywhere, and if if the count were to go over fifteen, and obviously we can't have it in this room, but at least it's an idea of, let me get back to where, okay. That would be a way to to have a meeting where it's likely that less than fourteen people will attend. It could be in this room, that's, we have it in one room, we can keep this room clean. It's it's not all around the Town Hall, it's the biggest room we've got, we can focus everything here, so that was our plan, and I want to thank Mr. Amato for working with me on that. If 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 the meeting is likely to be more than fourteen people, because again, we have, we have required public hearings that are coming up, we're, we're going to use the Hanson Middle School, I have reached out to the 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 school people, Ernie Sandlin and the person that works for them, Josh, Josh Torrey, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get, still learning everyone's names. And anyone, any meeting that could, that needs to be held that has more than fourteen people would have to be held there, they're they're on board with it. There, we have to fill out paperwork, I'd like to ask everyone that has one of those meetings to please go through my assistant Greer Getson, so that there aren't any meeting conflicts, we know when the meetings are, and we can try to work together to try to get some of the backlog going, and chip away at some of the backlog of the required hearings. So it's a little bit of good news, I guess, is that small meetings could be held in here, larger meetings can be held at the middle school.
John, excuse me, but to the extent that they don't think there'll be more than fourteen people, but all of a sudden, I don't know, you know, it becomes an incredibly popular meeting to attend, and, you know, there's like a grassroots movements, what what is the, how do we pivot? If we didn't think it was going to be fourteen and we're setting it up, you know, at the Selectmen's Meeting Room, but we really should have maybe done the middle school, do we simply tell people, sorry, we're limited to fourteen, and you're going to have to join us virtually, and then give them like Zoom dialing info, or how are we going to do that?
This is an idea, this is a scenario that I've been wrestling with for a long time, because what do you do with the fifteenth person, that's the question. Right now, what we're, what we're talking about is either if we're in this room and you have fourteen people, if, you know, five more people show up, if possible, maybe you move the the meeting outside, I don't want to exclude the fifteenth person from being able to 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 hear what's going on. If it's, you know, forty people showed up and we thought it would be fourteen, then we'd probably have to postpone the meeting and schedule it at the middle school. If it's, if it starts out at ten and then five people show up, or eight people show up and we're at eighteen, perhaps there's a way that we could take it and take it outside for that particular hearing, or whatever happens to be meeting at the time. Again, some, I would think that most boards and committees know the general consensus of what will bring people and what won't, and we'd have to try to keep an eye on that, but I I think you're right, that that, once that fifteenth person shows up, we are in, not in compliance, and we need to have a plan in place, a plan right now would be to try to take it outside, or if there's too many people, just cancel the meeting and hold it in a in an appropriate place, and I I would think that if the the Board of Committee thought there was even a chance that could be more than fourteen, they would go to the middle school.
Yeah, I agree, so are you guys going to, are you guys coming up with like a protocol, like a rules of the road kind of thing for these committees? I know it's only mostly the land use boards, right?
Yeah, so that's, that would be mostly, would be the well-attended meetings, I would think, again, I don't think some meetings have, you know, not very many people show up at all, but that's, I will have that in place by Monday, if we don't have it in place by by Monday, then we won't open until I have it in place, but that is what I'm working on right now to try to get a protocol of what to do, what happens when the fifteenth person shows up, what happens when this happens, if you feel that it's going to be more than 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 fourteen, is there even a remote chance of it? Let's get it over to the middle schools, that way we're, we've got plenty of space, but I I think, I I think those, if we have those, those those contingency plans in place, I think we'll still be okay, so anyway, but I'm working with 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 Gil Amato on that. So going back to Town Hall reopening, so starting Monday, July thirteenth, I'd like to have the Town Hall open from eight to four, Monday through Thursday by appointment only, so the way it will work here will be the public will have to call the Town Department with which they'd like to interact, and then that department person will escort them to the office to conduct business. The public will be required to answer COVID nineteen exposure related related questions before entering Town Hall, the public's going to. The public's going to be required to wear masks while in Town Hall and observe social distancing and hand sanitizing guidelines. If you can't or you won't wear a mask, a town employee will meet you outside to discuss, to conduct whatever business that is, that needs to be done. The lower parking lot door will be the only door that will be used to ensure access to the elevator for those who may need it. And I'm urging the public to please conduct as much business as possible without coming to Town Hall. We have drop boxes out front for payments. We have a drop box in the lower level here for large parcels. We have, we've got things, you can make payments on the Town website. You could send things in or by regular mail and you could call, you can email. You know, try to minimize the reason to come to Town Hall. Again, no cash will be accepted while we're in this appointment-only period. We're going to have an outside cleaning company come in and clean the building from top to bottom. And in, and then we're going to implement frequent cleaning regimens to ensure that the building's sanitized at all times. We'll have phone numbers on the doors of Town Hall. And there's a directory on the Town's website. I just want to get out to everyone. If you Google Hanson Town Hall, the phone number that Google may give you when you Google it, it may not be the correct number. We found that earlier today. So they, please call 781-293-5186 for faster service and to get your call directed to it in a proper manner. And I'd just like to thank the health agent, again, Gil Amato and myself. We've been working on this plan for a long time. I'd like to thank him, the Chief Mike Mix, my assistant Greer Getson, and everyone else that's been working towards opening day. It's been a great job for everyone. And one other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to offer is to have a, if, and to the chair would be, given what we were talking about earlier, for have July 21st as a Town Meeting Preview Meeting for the Board of Selectmen. And so that would be an additional meeting other than what we're talking here. But then we would skip the August 4th meeting. So we'd add one for July 21st for Town Meeting Preview. And also now to talk about finance committee recommendations that we'll have on the 14th when they meet. But then we would skip the August 4th meeting. That's the meeting after Town Me. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, John, a couple of things. So thank you for that. So I think that we should, on the 14th, we should meet next Tuesday in the Selectmen Meeting Room. And then I think on 7/21 for Town Meeting Preview, meet at the middle school. And let's get going with this thing. Let's, let's try it out. And we just have to overcome things as we go along. I was in the room today. I thought it looked great. You know, we, the only thing that we have to figure out is where all, all of us are going to go, you know, because you can't sit at that one table and have five Selectmen up there. But I'm ready. I say set up the meeting next week in a Selectmen Room and then see if you can pull off July 21st at the middle school for the Town Meeting Preview. That's one thing. The other thing, can you circle back to legal fees? Like that, like was a little disturbing. The, why is the legal fee so much money? You said 100 and over $150,000?
Uh, yes, it's a, yeah, it looks like it's 149.9, so, sorry, about 150,000, yes. It was 61,000 for Labor Council, 83,000 for General Counsel, about 3,000 for tax foreclosure and land taking by the town, and then about 1,700 for others.
So like, who, do we have a, like, do we have a policy in place as far as contacting Town Council? Like, can department heads can just reach out? Like, do we, do we have, we have this? It just seems to me like we got to get a grip on this. That's an awful lot of money. And I'd like to also see, and I realize you don't know now, is how much we've spent in the past couple of years. But that just blew my mind. That just seems like an absorbent amount of money for legal fees. Mr. Boss, go ahead.
Actually, when, when I was new to the board, I, but it was Mike McQ, so probably John is not involved. But I know we said, no one may contact legal counsel but the Town Administrator. He is the switchboard for everything going in. So it's just, I think we have to be careful and make sure that no one, no individual reaches out. John Stamper reaches out.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. But John, let's just, let's just look at, like I said, I don't know who's contacting, like I said, like I said, department heads. Do they have, you know, obviously you've got to reach out, but I guess I was just.
Greer was just telling me that there's a legal gatekeeper form that was, that we're supposed to be filling out so that I give authorization to people, to employees and boards and committees. So I will see, I'll check that form and.
And, John, and so that's perfect. Thank you, Greer. But I would go a step further and send out emails to Labor Counsel and also General Counsel. And let them know that they can't respond to any town employees unless they go through you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
Regarding legal fees, I think at one point we were offered a flat fee option for, maybe labor, was it?
Yes, it was labor. Yep. It was for Jamie and John, yep.
So I think that, I think that might be something to look into right now and see, you know, are the last couple of quarters higher, lower, and just kind of make a decision that way. Because if we can save money with a flat fee, it might be worth paying a couple of extra bucks in certain months rather than just, you know, getting spiked once in a while.
I think I, I would also say that perhaps it's time for us to just generally revisit performance and competitive value of, you know, some of our council. And I would also suggest, although I don't know this for sure, that Kate has spent quite a bit of time on this school assessment issue. And I am sure that that has impacted our fees. Quite a bit of time.
Okay. All right. Like I said, I just wanted to just bring that up. Just, I just thought it was a lot.
It is, it is a lot. But so can we plan on at some point talking about, and, and John, do we have to talk about this in executive session or not? Like whether we, is it an open session, you know, performance and whether we might want to go out to bid and that type of thing?
I, I'm not sure whether a rating of vendors' performance is a, something we can go into executive session about. I'd have to double check, but I would say probably not. It's probably have to be an open session, but I can double check that.
Okay.
Mr. Hickey?
Nope, I was just going to say, through my experience in the last three years on the board, it would be done in open session and on any vendor, we can do an RFP at any time.
Yeah, well, we might want to talk about that.
Okay. Right. Okay, good. Does anybody else have anything else? If not, I'm looking for a move to, oh, did I hear something? Go ahead, Mr. Dyer.
I know that you were trying to plan to have a meeting next week at the Selectmen's Meeting Room and also to discuss recreation. I don't know about anyone else, but you know, I saw a petition online with over 100 signatures. You know, whether or not 100 people would show up to the meeting. But I think people are feeling really passionate right now about Cranberry Cove. And if we want to make sure that we're not limiting participation in an open meeting and so we're not ending up in that nightmare situation that John was talking about of, what do you do with that 15th person? I, I'd probably advocate for this next meeting, seeing how it has something possibly controversial or something that would have a draw to be either at the middle school or the small lecture hall up at the high school. Just something where we're able to make sure we allow as many participants as possible.
I agree. I don't feel comfortable being in the Selectmen's Room at this point. Even if it was just us, I don't feel comfortable. I'm not going into the office. I don't feel comfortable. I, I love you guys and love talking to you and would love to see you all again someday soon. But I don't want to be sitting two feet from you in, in a room. So if, if it could be at the middle school, I, I would be okay with that.
Well, we wouldn't be sitting two feet. We would have to adhere to the guidelines, just like everyone else. We wouldn't be any different.
I'm exaggerating, but I mean, I, I just, you know, we're not going to be able to wear masks because we're talking. You know, even if we wear them in between, I, I just, you know, I think, I don't, I want to, are on the side of caution. And I would not feel comfortable physically attending in the Selectmen's Room at this time. I know you said you would, Kenny, but this is just me personally.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And can I just say, I did, I drove down to the Cove and saw the parking lot. And it struck me that this is what dire financial straits look like. This is visible. There's going to be a lot of less visible cutting going on for the public when, when 1.35 million dollars disappears from our budget. So despite, I mean, I know in the, in the last couple of meetings, we've, I've talked about parking lots and stuff. But when it comes down to it, this is a dire financial situation. And if it cannot be funded adequately, if it cannot be totally supported, the town is not going to be able to afford this, no matter what the social distancing guidelines are. And I'll, I'll throw one more thing in there. You know, I, I'm an educator and I'm looking forward to school in September. And I believe that while most people are taking the appropriate precautions and wearing masks and social distancing, that when this, when we open the Cove, there are going to be big issues with people. There are people in Hanson who will not wear a mask. There are people in Hanson who are not worried about their kids and the spread of COVID. And they're going to show up on the beach. No matter what precautions we take, all our best measures, the beach is going to be the place where a school in the women's Hanson District does not open in September, except virtually because there's a surge, because we are not being careful with our kids. I, I really, much more, it is going to be a difficult summer. And all you have to do is go down and look at that parking lot and say, wow, in 80 years, we have never closed Cranberry Cove, not in 80 years. But this year, if we're putting the, I'm not going to say welfare either, because there, we can get around, we can get around the summer without the Cove. But we're going to end up not going back to school in the Whitman Hanson District. And we're not going to be able to afford this. It's just on those two big issues alone, I still have such reservations about moving forward with the Cove.
Okay. All right, so so next, okay, so you guys don't, so John, see what the school says about next week and we'll go from there. Please.
Okay, yeah, I'll see if we can turn it around in a week. I think we could, but I, I don't know. I can't promise anything.
Right.
So can, can we just recap when our next meetings are next week? And then you want to meet the 21st again, John?
The 14th and the 21st.
So and the 21st will be the preview and the 14th, we already had that on the, on the calendar. And then you're saying skip the 4th?
Correct.
And our next meeting would be when?
The 11th.
August, August 11th.
Okay, and would we meet the 18th?
I don't have, I didn't go that far, probably, yes.
We can cross that bridge when we get to it. Okay.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Dyer.
Hi.
Mr. Hickey.
Hi.
Ms. Kement.
Hi.
Mr. Boss.
Hi.
And Mitchell, hi. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.